To suburban Hennepin, we need to work with them to collect these documents. And there is a few things that they need to change regarding their board and how their board will look in order to submit everything that will be inclusive of the city of Minneapolis. So the concerns that were raised by Councilmember Yang about the composition of the board, those are the things that we need to address prior to submitting the intent with the state. The third resolution is that the staff be directed to arrange for the public hearing as required by the regulations. That will include securing the location and the time and getting the notices out. The fourth resolution is the one that we just discussed previously about arranging for a hearing officer. The next resolution is that staff be directed to return to council to request final designation of a successor community action agency pursuant to the regulations, again, the 30 days after the public hearing has been held. And then the last resolution, or excuse me, the second to last resolution is that prior resolutions that had designated Community Action Minneapolis as our community action agency be superseded. And then, just to make it really clear, there's a final resolution that says, nothing in this resolution shall be regarded as a final designation of a new community action agency. So it's very clear that all this is preliminary. We're doing all the preliminary things as required by the regulations, and we will be back before this council seeking a final designation. And I can stand for questions if there are any about the resolution.
All right. Well, I just also want to add my thanks to the staff team that took on this task of investigating what we needed to do to abide by our obligations, to have a good process for identifying a new community action agency for service to the city of Minneapolis, and really thank everyone who was involved for what I know was a lot of hard work, pulling together a very unique set of materials, working with the state, working with all these other jurisdictions to make sure that we were doing what we needed to do. So we have a motion by Councilmember Gordon on this action. And I'll just note, too, I'll kind of take Council President Johnson's amendment right now. She's made a motion to amend the resolution clause four up from the bottom, I believe it is, that would amend the language to read that Minneapolis City Council is directing staff to arrange for a hearing officer to conduct the public hearing. So with that amended language, could we just vote on that amendment? Any discussion? All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That amendment has passed and then on the underlying action, any discussion on Councilmember Gordon's motion? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that item is passed, which includes some staff directions as described, as well as the resolution, which we now have approved. So I believe with that, we have concluded with our actions today on community action. I'm just checking that we have. And again, thank you. So next item on our agenda is the Workplace Regulations Partnership. And I believe Mr. Carl is going to lead us through this item. And really, there are two related items. The first is an action to adopt meeting protocols. And I'll note that Mr. Carl reviewed these proposed protocols at our last committee hole. And then the next action is regarding recommended appointments.
Good morning, Madam Chair. May it please the committee, as indicated, I'm here on behalf of the staff team that is supporting the workplace regulations partnership led by Deputy City Coordinator Nuria Rivera-Vandermyde, who's also here this morning. We are specifically presenting two items, as indicated. First, a proposed framework to govern the operation of this partnership group in the form of policy-level principles. And second, a formal slate of nominations for this committee's consideration as appointments to that partnership group. The Workplace Regulations Partnership was created as a temporary working group that is specifically charged with studying and developing policy recommendations related to earned sick time and paid time off. The partnership is designed to be a collaborative effort between key stakeholders. Thus, rather than speak of two sides of this issue, we've reframed the proposal as bringing together multiple perspectives and a myriad of voices with the shared goal of identifying workable solutions that can be agreed to as the basis for future policy proposals addressing a pressing issue in the community, that being, of course, an equitable, health-conscious, productive work environment that values employees while simultaneously respecting the differing demands and operating environments of various businesses and industries, all of which constitute the city of Minneapolis. So the first item is about the framework to facilitate an equitable engagement amongst all of the stakeholders, as well as the community at large. And staff has, as the chair indicated, at the direction of this body, prepared a set of operating principles and meeting protocols intended to guide the work of the partnership in conducting its work during the next 13-week period. These draft operating principles were reviewed at the last committee meeting, so I won't cover them in great detail this morning. Briefly, I will just go over these principles as they are grouped together in a handful of categories. First, it is the council's policy intent that the partnership provide public access to its work, including a requirement that all business meetings be open to the community. Second, the partnership is empowered to select its own leadership in the form of a chair and vice chair. The principles that we've drafted, however, express the council's expectation that these leadership positions will ensure all members have a fair and balanced opportunity to participate in the work that has been delegated to the partnership group. Third, there are some general procedural issues addressed in the principles, such as the definition of quorum, voting procedures, and the disposition of the partnership's records and files. Fourth, the council's expectations for community engagement align with core principles of community engagement that have been adopted previously by the city of Minneapolis in order to assure that any policy recommendations developed by the partnership are shared with the public and that the public's input is reflected in the final report. And of course, finally, that the final recommendations on earned, sick, and paid time off developed by the partnership must be submitted to the mayor and city council in writing no later than February 24, 2016. With that high-level summary, Madam Chair, on the first item, staff respectfully requests a favorable recommendation by this committee on the operating principles for final action by the full city council.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Carl. I'm not seeing questions, so I'll go ahead and move approval of this action item. Is there discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. I know that you have been working with Ms. Rivera-Vandermyde and others to develop some protocols and get things set up to be ready and prepared to serve the board. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, with your permission, I'll proceed to the second item. The second item is to do with the appointments. And before I actually present the nomination slate, I wanted to just briefly summarize the broader composition of the partnership. As this committee is aware, based on prior action by the city council, the partnership group is to be composed of 15 members, each of whom is to represent one of four specific stakeholder groups. These groups are employees, or representatives of employees, specifically including low-wage earners, representatives of organized labor, employers, including both large and small employers, as well as immigrant-owned businesses, and finally, representatives of business groups or associations. Three members will be appointed by Mayor Hodges. Two members will be appointed by Council President Johnson. The 10 remaining members will be appointed by the full city council. As you know, applications were accepted from interested individuals through 5:00 PM last Monday, November 9th, netting us a total of 77 applications. There were a handful of applications submitted after that deadline, and they were included in the pool of applications provided to all policymakers, putting the final total of applications received by the city at 80. This slide then shows the five appointments being made by Mayor Hodges and by Council President Johnson, specifically by the mayor, Liz Doyle from Take Action Minnesota, representing employees, Jim Rowder from Target, representing large-sized employers, and Danny Schwartzman, owner of Common Roots Cafe and Catering, representing small-sized employers, and by the council president, Steve Kramer of the Minneapolis Regional Chamber, representing business associations, and Wade Loonberg from Unite Here Local 17, representing organized labor.
And I just want to make a small correction. Mr. Kramer is with the downtown council.
Thank you. Before I proceed to the 10 that have been brought forward as a slate for city council's consideration, I should also note, I did make a reach out to those individuals last night to confirm that their names were being presented as possible appointments to this group. Several of them indicated they might be here this morning, and so I wanted to make that note for the council. Also, copies of the full roster of proposed nominations are available from the clerk. So the following represent the first five seats to be considered by the city council for appointment. This following slate was brought forward by leadership for the 10 seats. They include Susie Brown, who is the Public Policy Director with the Minnesota Council of Nonprofits, representing business associations, specifically nonprofit organizations and agencies; Faisal Mohammed Dari, Chief Executive of Optima Health, an immigrant-owned healthcare services firm in the category of employer; Brian Elliott, Executive Director with Service Employees International Union, representing organized labor; Dana Frank, Co-Owner and Executive Vice President of First Avenue, representing the employer stakeholder group; Molly Glasgow, Vice President of the Board of the Twin Cities Metro Independent Business Alliance, representing the business association stakeholder group, specifically small and independently owned business. The six through 10 seats include Chelsea Globetz-Gobow from the Minneapolis Regional Labor Foundation, representing organized labor; Ron Harris with Neighborhoods Organizing for Change as a representative of employees, particularly low-wage earning employees; Tony La Croix Delune, Nursing Director for Abbott Northwestern Hospital, representing employers, particularly healthcare organizations; Yarmo Alexander Lindsey, an employee from the fast-food restaurant industry, representing employees; and Christopher Carl Pennick, an employee from the service industry, also representing employees. If we consider all 15 of these nominations, then the representation among the four identified stakeholder groups appears to be distributed as follows. A total of four for employees or representatives of employees, specifically among low-wage earners; a total of three representatives of organized labor; a total of five employers, including large and small employers and immigrant-owned businesses; and a total of three representatives of business groups and associations. With that, Madam Chair, this slide presents the total slate of nominations that have been proposed for the committee's consideration. And for the benefit of the viewing public, I'll quickly read through all of the names. Liz Doyle, Jim Rowder, Danny Schwartzman, Steve Kramer, Wade Loonberg, Susie Brown, Faisal Mohammed Dari, Brian Elliott, Dana Frank, Molly Glasgow, Chelsea Globetz-Gobow, Ron Harris, Tony La Croix Delune, Yarmo Alexander Lindsey, and Christopher Carl Pennick. With that, staff respectfully requests the committee's favorable action on this slate of nominations and further recommends that you direct staff to notify those who are selected for appointment and proceed to organize an initial orientation session, and also to express to all applicants who were not selected for appointment to this working group our sincere appreciation for their interest in this effort.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Carl. I might ask Council President, if you'd like to make the motion here. I know that you had made the underlying motion that took us to this place.
I'm happy, Madam Chair. Thank you to move the recommendations. And I just really want to thank Mr. Carl and Ms. Vandermyde Rivera, Mr. Kronk as well, for all the help on this. As Mr. Carl said, 80 applications and sorting through all that information and getting that to us has really been a ton of work. So thank you so much. I want to thank my colleagues who helped us put the slate together. In particular, Council Vice President Glidden and Councilmember Quincy, we worked with each other to try and come up with a balanced group of people. My colleagues have recognized that work, and I really appreciate it. It's never easy to make a group decision like this. So I'm pleased that we have a great group of people to work on this issue with us. And so one of the things that has come up in the discussion about the work that this group is charged with doing is to have information presented from individual industries in our city. And Councilmember Kano contacted me yesterday. She's very interested in having a presentation for the group from Latino businesses in Minneapolis. And so Ms. Rivera-Vandermyde is going to undertake that. We've had interest from the hospitality industry, and I think that group is working to put together a session. The other financial services was another one. And so I encourage my colleagues to think about where we would see, where people would see the need for presentations about particular industries in our city. To me, that's been the most interesting part of this whole discussion, is finding out exactly how, you know, how many people are employed in particular places, what challenges they have in recruiting, keeping employees, and what challenges employees have working in those industries. So I would encourage also all of my colleagues, this is not going to be a ton of meetings. So I think it's important for us also to participate and as listeners in the meetings as they move forward. So we get the perspective that the group is getting at the same time without being the ones in the Darver seat. I think it'd be good for us. So I hope we'll get a copy of the schedule as it's put together and encourage people to participate. But thank you all for working so hard on this and look forward to working with the partnership and moving forward on sick and paid time off for people in the city of Minneapolis.
So we have a couple of councilmembers in queue. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I wanted to point out that on Friday, I will be bringing a motion or an amendment to have for alternates for the partnership. The partnership will be meeting throughout the holidays possibly, and members of the committee may not all be present at the same meetings. This will present an opportunity also for us to add more diversity and representation to this partnership. And my staff will be bringing around the motion language and consulting with all of you with regards to potential alternates either today or tomorrow.
Thank you for the heads up, Councilmember Yang. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the work that went into this. I was impressed with all the applicants and all the people who applied. Hopefully, we can keep those people in mind as we move forward. And if the group wants to reach back and out and find out how can we get some more input from some underrepresented groups or entities or particular industries, we have a great resource here now with lots of people that you can turn to and say, well, these could be people we could come and get advice from. I have, of course, carefully scrutinizing the list and trying to figure out the balance and imbalance and what's going on. And if you were going to divide it to, and I know we're not really supposed to try to divide it up, but if you thought about it as owners versus workers, it seems to me that business has one representative more than the employees or the workers. I was also interested in the categorization of the businesses into large and immigrant-owned and healthcare and restaurant and those kinds of things. And then I was trying to think about if we did look at those in terms of large and small businesses, I noted that there's really only one small business that has a representative there, and that's Common Roots, I believe. And I know we had some other small business applicants who probably have under 30. I'm not sure how we defined it, if it was 50. But looking at even the immigrant-owned business looks like a large business, even though it's not categorized. And I think Abbott Northwestern Hospital, that's categorized as healthcare, would be considered a large business. And then looking at the associations, I think some of them represent lots of businesses. So I just want us to remember that we should be making sure that small business gets a voice in this as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am happy to support this slate of candidates today, and I appreciate all the work that staff has done, especially with the short timeline, putting this together, having a process for people to apply, and the great materials you put together for the council to review, folks. It was just great to see, and I didn't hear a single complaint about the short timeline and all the huge amount of work, and you handled it so professionally. And really want to thank council leadership as well for bringing forward a balanced slate here. And then I just wanted to say some words of encouragement as well to these folks that, you know, this is a tremendous opportunity and such a great moment for our city to put together a really solid recommendation for council on the issue of paid sick. We have more than 100,000 people in this city who have an economic incentive to come into work sick, to get others sick, to prolong their own illness and their recovery, ultimately their recovery. And it has a huge cost, a huge cost across our city, and it has a huge effect disproportionately on our low-income workers. And this is something we need to correct. It is an injustice, and it's something that ultimately, if we and I look towards the workgroup members that I see here today, if we can put together a really balanced recommendation that's not overly burdensome for businesses, but that also gets at this goal and gets at the outcome of giving people the ability to focus on getting better and getting back to work at full productivity, we're going to be such a better city for it. And we're going to promote not only their individual health, but the health of the community and the health of our businesses and economy. So I thank you for stepping forward, for all the individuals that stepped forward. And I look forward to following along with this work and encourage you to work hard, and I know you'll do well, putting together a solid recommendation. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank Mr. Carl and staff, as well as all the different councilmembers who worked on this. I was not one of them. So I appreciate all of this work. I would urge us to not get into the business of stereotyping or making assumptions about what the position is of any of these applicants. I'll note, as Councilmember Gordon says, well, there's more employers than employees. I'll note that two of the employers were very vocally out there, both Danny at Common Grounds and the gentleman from Target, saying they were in favor. So I don't think that we should be in the position of assuming that any individual applicant has an intractable position. The point of this is for people to come together and provide information from where they sit. And so I don't think we, as a council, or the media, or anyone else, should say, well, you're an employer, therefore you're against, or you're an employee, and therefore you're for. Everybody is for trying to figure out how sick people shouldn't have to go to work and still be compensated for that time. Everybody is for trying to do something. And when we take a position, a leadership position from this dais suggesting that employers are against or employees are for, that puts us all in a very compromised position.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had more of a procedural question. I wondered if the applicants who haven't been selected had been notified. I would understand if that hadn't happened. And then just a comment or maybe a follow-up question. I imagine those people are really interested in participating, and so just seems like it'd be great if we could follow up and just offer ways that people can continue to participate in the process in the future.
Madam Chair, I can take a stab at that first part, and perhaps the president or you also have comments, having been very engaged in this process. No, I have not made contact with those who were not put forward as part of a nomination. I have been clear, though, with those that I contacted about the nomination that this is not the final process today, that the final vote is Friday, and things can change between Wednesday and Friday. So that they've been notified that their names have been put forward at this point, subject to a final vote, which could present a very different nomination slate on Friday. Just as a courtesy, I felt that they needed to know their names had been made today public and that they had the right to be here to hear those comments. It is my expectation that, as part of this directive we put forward, that all members who are finally selected and appointed, and those who are not selected and appointed, would receive a contact from my office, thanking them for their interest, encouraging them to participate through the public engagement process this committee or this workgroup will engage in as directed by this body, so that they continue to have opportunities to participate and have their voices part of that process, perhaps not as one of those 15 seats.
You want to make a? Yeah. Okay. All right. I'm not seeing any further comment. I'll just say as well, again, oh, Mr. Carl, you have a...
I'm sorry. With your indulgence, Madam Chair, I know you want to make some comments as well. Thank you for giving me just a moment. I've stood here and received lots of compliments. Thank you. But I know that you know that the staff who are behind me, those sitting in the chairs in the clerk's office, are the ones who put this work together, who did this and made it happen. It would be a terribly remiss point on my part if I did not thank them and pass those compliments along. I did none of this work. They did it. So thank you for the compliments, and those go rightfully to the women in the clerk's office. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Carl. Thank you for acknowledging your staff that really did a very professional job in extremely quickly pulling together materials, giving a good organized set of materials to work from, just in very short order, knowing this was a really important task. And so thank you for that acknowledgement. And I just want to add my thanks to all of the applicants. This was a very robust set of applicants. And really, for people to put their names out there, knowing they could be selected to be part of, frankly, a very public process, working very hard in a short amount of time, I just want to thank everyone from all the different stakeholder groups who offered to be part of this process. And thank you also to those who have been notified that their names are being put forward, and they haven't stepped away. They've said, we're here. And I just want to say that's very appreciated as well. And I think we're wise to wait until Friday to see that final vote and then have a good communication of thanks and offers of participation to the group that clearly has something to offer the process. So with that, we have Council President Johnson's motion to approve the slate. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that item is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have misplaced my agenda, but I think we are done with our business on the discussion items. We are on to committee reports. And the first report is Community Development and Regulatory Services with Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee is bringing forward seven items for approval on Friday. Item one are the regular liquor business and gambling license applications. Item number two is a carryforward of our housing revenue bond entitlement for 2015. Item number three is a debt restructure for the Ashikunabi-Wakayagon development project. They're actually building a new project. We're going to tie their financing together. Item number four is the commercial garden policy changes. Item five is the modifications to the community gardening policy. Item number six is the 2015 levy for special assessment and adoption of the assessment rolls. Item number seven is the action with regard to reopening Nicollet and Lake. I'll note that we did have a conversation. One gentleman did step forward in committee to speak about the issue of the levy of special assessments, and staff is working with him, and that will not be assessed during the cycle. We're just trying to find out if an amendment will be required or not. With that, I'm happy to answer questions on items one through seven for approval tomorrow, or Friday.
All right. I don't think anybody is, unless we might just clear off the names from the last discussion item. And next, we have health, environment, and community engagement. Oh, I'm sorry, this was on here. I got confused. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Wanted to speak with regards to a couple items on there regarding community gardens. You know, on Friday, I will be, I guess, bringing forth the staff direction on the vacant lots and single-family home developments. And, you know, just want to make some comments. I watch with the interest as CPED staff develop the community and commercial garden policies. I was a bit underwhelmed when the policy came back with fewer than 50 lots throughout the city as potential gardens. My interest in this stems from the hundreds of vacant lots in the city that is in Ward Five. There are a lot of them, and hundreds of lots costing the city more money in maintenance every year than we are selling them for. These empty lots remind Northsiders of homes long lost to demolition and the unraveling of the fabric of our community. And as we were shown in zoning and planning this week, there is a need for affordable housing on the north side with many renters paying unaffordable amounts and more than a mortgage that would cost them. And here we are with acres of land that could and should support single-family homes staring us in the face. On Friday, I will be bringing forward a staff direction directing CPED staff to bring together a working group to spur infill development on city-owned parcels. And that could include development or community gardens. The purpose of this group will be to identify strategies for the marketing, sale, development, and use of government-owned lots in the city of Minneapolis. This group should identify the barriers to development and develop solutions for those barriers. This group should include both our economic development and real estate staff, but also zoning staff, and it should include nonprofits, for-profit, single-family home developers, banks, financial institutions, and everybody under the sun, just to find a solution. In the broader discussion we are having around equity, I can think of nothing better for my constituents than stable, affordable housing that allows them to thrive, learn, and build while... and build wealth. And my staff will be sharing the details and going around council offices in the next day or two.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
I also just wanted to alert folks to amendments about the land access proposal. That one I think I highlighted in committee when I spoke, I'm interested in making sure that our pollinator-friendly city resolution applies to these lands as well, because it is city land, even though we're leasing it out. So I'm going to ask us to amend it so that we make sure we have a list of pesticides that are prohibited. I'm also exploring an amendment that would reduce the administrative fee. I did look into this, and just to have the vacant lot cost us almost $3,500 to shovel and mow it. So the more that we can get actually up in use, we'll actually take those costs off. And also, I'm trying to clarify that if you want to have multiple parcels leased, you can do one application to get a couple parcels, because we do have some of the growers that like to have more than one parcel. So I'll share those amendments between now and Friday, and glad to bring them forward.
Okay. Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. On the same item, this is a fairly substantial motion overall, and I think that it's worth just checking back in in a year to see how things are functioning. So I am contemplating bringing some form of amendment in that light.
All right. Thank you. So I believe those are all the comments on the CD agenda. So with that, we're ready to turn to health. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The health, environment, and community engagement committee is going to be bringing five items forward for approval. The bulk of them are appointments.